Hello and welcome to the Northeast Ohio Media Group Candidate Debates. Thanks for joining us. I'm Leila Atasi. Today, we're hosting a debate for the Brooklyn Heights Village Council. Three at-large seats are up for election November 3rd. We're joined by four of the candidates tonight. We'll hear from them in a moment, but first, the rules. We'll start with one minute for each candidate to introduce themselves and explain why they're running. Then, we'll ask questions, giving each candidate 90 seconds to answer and a minute for any follow-up. That'll give them a chance to challenge one another on their responses. And at the end, we allow 10 minutes for the candidates to ask each other questions, with 60 seconds permitted for the answers. So, let's begin. Please, please tell us a little bit about yourself, Tom Laif, and tell our viewers why you deserve their vote.
Thank you, Leila. My name is Tom Laif. I'm running for village council at large. I've been on council two terms, from 2006 to 2013. Decided not to run two years ago, when I want to come back and to be on council to concentrate on economic development. I work as a financial advisor. I sold pension plans for Merrill Lynch. And now, I have my own insurance agency that I sell commercial and homeowners and property and casualty insurance. We have a great town, and I just want to make sure it stays great.
Okay. Thank you. And now, next will be Jennifer Presot. Please, a minute, if you would.
My name's Jennifer Presot. I have lived in the village of Brooklyn Heights since 1971. I served on council since 2004. I've now been off for a year after the last election. I was the third candidate that ran for a two-seat run. But here I am again, anxious to get back and do the job that I feel I hadn't finished. I agree with Tom. We have a beautiful community. We have great services, low taxes, and I want to keep ensuring to the residents of the village of Brooklyn Heights that we have that to come in the future.
Thank you. Next is Mark Lasky.
Hello. My name is Mark Lasky. I was born and raised in Brooklyn Heights, and I've been a proud resident for over 41 years. My wife Heather and I are raising our two children, Matthew who is seven, and Joshua, who is five, within our village. I graduated from Cleveland State University. I currently work at the NASA Glen Research Center as an electrical engineer for the past 16 years. I love our village. It's been the only residence I've ever written down on a resume. My children play a lot of sports, and I just want to be more involved within the community and make a positive impact. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, Narlan Shad.
Hi. My name is Narlan Shad, and I am also running for a village council. I'm the, one of the new guys on the block, as I have never run before. I have been a school teacher for the last 37 years, retired in 2012. But I have gone back to substituting in the Cleveland Catholic Diocese at St. Leo the Great, where I'm a parishioner, and also back in the Cleveland Municipal School District. I've lived in Brooklyn Heights for the last 10 years. I have been working in Brooklyn Heights though since 1989, where I've been coaching the youth in the soccer program there. Bruce Chahaki, a dear friend of mine who passed away a few years ago, told me about in 1992, "Narlan, you dedicated so much time down in the village. We're going to have to find you a house in the village." I did find myself a house on Shady Ridge Lane. Bruce didn't help me buy it, but I've been there for 10 years with my 41-year-old, 41 years I've been married to my wife, with my four children. The village is a great place to live, and I hope I can help make an impact on making it even better. Thank you.
Thank you. So now, we'll begin with the questions. First, we'll begin with Tom. What is the greatest challenge your city faces today, and how do you propose to address it?
That's a great question. We do have a great town, and we have 1,600 residents. And when our buildings are filled, we have 3,500 people work in the buildings. And that magic ratio of two to one was what pays the bills. 4.2 million of our $5 million comes from that 2% employment tax for the people who work in Brooklyn Heights. Unfortunately, if you look at our website, we have 30 empty buildings right now. And last year, we lost $370,000. We're still in better financial shape than most communities. We have $1 billion in the bank. We have virtually no debt. But, two years ago, when we left council, we had $1.6 million in the bank. So, the trend is not good. When I decided to not run for reelection, I wanted to move into the economic development position, and they decided not to fill that position. So, my goal is to get back on council, work with the business owners, and do it from the council seat. It doesn't cost the village any money, but it's a critical part to everything else that we do. And when we have more money coming in than is going out, we can provide all the services and everything that we want.
Thank you. Jennifer?
Economic development is probably key within our community right now. Watching where our services have been and where we are currently, we're still offering fantastic services to our residents, but we're not offering nearly what we used to. And promoting our community and trying to fill our empty businesses is definitely key. Our residents enjoy the services that we have. We have a fantastic safety force program within our community, and that's top-notch. Our residents couldn't ask for anything else. Our seniors have wonderful programs available, the kids' youth programs, and the volunteer programs that are run through our park board that are based under our Men and Women's Service Club. We have a wonderful community. But it could be even better if we had more money in the bank. Clearly, most communities, you know, all communities could say the same thing. And I agree with Tom that, you know, we are still offering more services than a lot of other communities. We went through a rough patch in 2010, when we were currently sitting on council, where we had to make drastic cuts to our budget. I'm proud to say we didn't eliminate any positions within the community, but everyone across the board noticed the difference in services at that time. And we've slowly been able to bring some of them back, but I'm anxious to bring back more economic development to our community and see more money in our account.
Mark?
Good answers. It's going to be tough to follow, but I think you guys hit it right on the head. We need to bring more businesses into the village, and how do you do that? And I believe you really have to start with advertising our village. We have an outstanding location. We're 10 miles from downtown Cleveland. We're halfway between the east and the west sides. Our central location offers excellent access to all the major highways going north and southeast and west. Our tax rates are excellent. As Tom hit on the head before, we do have roughly 1,550 residents in a 1.8-square-mile area. We have 600 homes. Not to reiterate what Jennifer said, but we do have outstanding services. The national average for police is 1.9 officers per every 1,000 residents. Currently, in Brooklyn Heights, we have approximately one officer per every 100 residents. Our fire department can be on scene within five minutes with all their apparatus if there's an emergency. Our village service department does an excellent job taking care of our village and keeping it beautiful. In the wintertime, we never have a problem driving on our streets because they're out there working tirelessly to remove all the snow. And all these services are extremely efficient. One thing we cannot do is be content. We always need to look for ways to research and not only maintain, but also improve these community services.
Narlan?
I think economic development is definitely the key going forward. Currently, we have 16 acres that are up for development on Granger Road. We also have three acres on East Shaft Road. And then, across the street, on the north side, we have 116 acres that are owned by various people. If we could somehow advertise that on a large-scale basis, that would do good to help bring a lot more revenue in. As Mark said, you know, we're very out there and noticeable to people in our, that drive by. We have approximately 142,000 people that drive by daily on Interstate 480. And I think by advertising on a large-scale basis to let them know what we have would be absolutely great. Our community is good. There's no doubt about it. I do think that we are more content than what some people, at least some of the voters that I've talked to, want to be, where I think we can get out there and do some more programs and help the programs we have right now, instead of being a little content, which I think we have kind of grown accustomed to.
Attracting business, oh, I'm sorry. First, would you, does anyone, would you like to go ahead and follow up?
You know, economic development is the key, but you have to have a plan on how do you attack it. And the first and foremost is we need to have a, get together with every current business owner that's in Brooklyn Heights, establish a relationship with them, and make sure that they're happy, so that we can't afford to lose any. We also need to ask for their help in introducing us to other business owners who are looking to relocate. We can go out and tell business owners how great it is. We have the lowest tax rate in the county. We have the great location, three-minute emergency response time. But if another business owner tells them, it's worth 50 times that amount. We also need to work with commercial realtors to educate them on Brooklyn Heights. Brooklyn Heights, for years, has been a secret, and that was fine when we had the buildings filled. Now, we need to work at, and we need to have a plan.
Would you like to follow up?
He hit the nail on the head with that one.
Mark?
No.
Narlan?
I would just like to say, you know, you're correct, Tom. We do need to advertise more as far as what we have to offer in Brooklyn Heights. I think, hearing what the mayor has said before and reading some of his literature, and again, I'm just the new guy on the block. He has said that, you know, we are very pro-business, and we listen to business and the things that they need. It sounds like therefore, we're the villages for and want to promote more of a relationship. I'd like to see, being a new guy again, what the relationship really has been, and have we really gone out and done all that we have done to talk with the businesses, to see any gripes that they may have, or anything, any ideas that they may have to help us promote our unused properties that we have and businesses.
The next question is, what would you change about the way your city currently, or your village is currently managed and governed? It sounds from the first responses that the lack of a director of economic development might be among those. Jennifer, would you like to take this one first?
I feel that our community actually runs quite well. Our department heads do a phenomenal job, and our council is, you know, being a small community, is available to its residents and its employees at any time. Economic development really is, it's the key. I really feel we need to fill that position again and rethink how we approach our current businesses and how we approach potential businesses outside of the village. We just established our website recently, in the last couple of years. And I think that our community services department did a phenomenal job of putting that together and, you know, trying to keep it updated and get the information out there about current things that are happening within our community, so people can take a look at that. It, you know, from our safety forces to different, our men and women's service programs, service club programs that we offer for potential residents to move in. We have quite a few empty homes in our community, which, growing up, never happened in our community. Before you knew it, your neighbor was moving out, but they had already sold their home to somebody else. You never saw a for-sale sign. And unfortunately, we were even part of the foreclosure history that's taking place, you know, around us and other surrounding communities. So, it's getting the word out to promote, you know, the beautiful village that we have and the wonderful services and tax, low taxes that it offers.
Mark?
Can you repeat your question, please?
Yes. The question was, what would you change about the way your village currently is managed and governed?
Some of the things that I would like to see changed in our village. We've touched a lot on economic development, but we also have excellent programs for all our residents, especially senior citizens. We do a lot for cutting their grass, removing their snow, and transportation programs. What I would like to see is some new programs initiated for other families to keep younger families with children rooted within our communities. This would have an immediate impact on our village. It would strengthen our village. We'd have more residents, and it would also impact our school district with more children. I think some examples that we could possibly do within our community is a possible community garden. I've heard things of a dog park for some of the residents, maybe a year-round pavilion that the residents can use. And some of our space in the park that is not utilized right now to its potential. There's also things that we need to do to keep the children happy and the younger families rooted, so they don't move out to other communities. We need to continue to beautify our parks, our park equipment, and our playing fields. One last thing that I really believe is that our children, our youth programs, and their sports and social programs, you know, again, we can't be content with what we have. We need to keep looking to strengthen these, to keep the kids active, and keep the families here. They are, you know, our future, and I hope that the children grow up in Brooklyn Heights, come back and raise their families within the village, just like I am doing.
Thank you. Narlan?
We do have a beautiful village. The park, Tuxedo Park, is excellent. I've been down there probably more than I am in my own personal yard with my granddotters and coaching the children down there for a very long time. Mark brings up a good point. We have some senior citizens in the area who are very limited in some of their yard space. Going around to the neighborhood, I've seen where they've got tiny little gardens, a good garden area, and we do have some space down there to be able to implement that would be good. And it would get the senior citizens outside. We have a bus now that takes senior citizens on different, to different venues, to be able to bring them down into the park, you know, work on their gardens. That would be a fantastic thing. Also, if I were in council, I would definitely look at our recreation program and see what we could do to make our recreation program even better for the children, as that seems to be a concern as I go around and talk to various people in the village. That's about it.
Thank you. We'll start with you, Jennifer, just as terms of rebuttal, or?
I can go to mine.
Oh, I'm sorry. Getting used to this format.
It's okay.
Sorry, Tom.
Jennifer mentioned about four years ago, or actually, it was six years ago, that we had to make some very difficult decisions. And every time you make a decision on council, you have to weigh in what's best for the residents, what's best for the employees, what's best for the businesses, and what's best for the budget. And sometimes, there's conflicts, and there's very difficult. And four years ago, I made a decision that for the, in the park, we would start charging people for the pavilions, for renting them. And we made a mistake. And so, we need to reverse that, because now, nobody uses the pavilions except for people outside the village who just come and come in. But we were trying to, we were trying to balance a budget when we had our biggest employer leave, and it was $1 million coming out of the budget, and we just had to try and find some ways. But so, some of the, those are some of the things that just, small things, because overall, it's run pretty well. And we still take care of the seniors and have some great programs for Art in the Park and for the kids.
Thank you. Anyone want to follow up?
No. We do offer wonderful services. There's always room for growth. Luckily, we live within a community that is actively, constantly seeking grant money, which is quite helpful as well. Our community services department was key in finding assistance through a grant to offer our Art in the Park program that I volunteered with. This was my second year, working with the children in the park during the summer. And the children loved it, and everybody had a wonderful time, but it's something that we were able to bring back, and it didn't cost the village anything. And luckily, we have a council and a mayor who promote looking and seeking grant money that's out there. And I'd like to be able to see us continue doing that in all of our departments, as they have been already, to help and save in our own budget and have, you know, assistance money coming in.
Thank you. Any further thoughts on that?
I would just like to add that, you know, we never want to be content within the village. Never be, always be looking ahead, instead of looking over our shoulders, trying to improve our community, trying to improve our services, and trying to prove, improve our programs for our children. And not only just look for ways to do it, but actually follow through and complete those activities.
One of the reasons that I decided to run for council is because I wanted to be part of the recreation program. I am a, I guess you could say, close to professional coach. I've got my United States Soccer Federation A license. I've coached at Padua-Franiscan High School for 15 years. I've done recreation, travel, and club soccer. And I wanted to give more of myself to be part of the program. And not to get into specifics just quite yet, until you allow us to do it, maybe toward the end, but I wanted to be part of that rec program, because I think, as Mark says, it's a bit of a stale program right now, and there are other activities that can, we can be involved in, not just soccer, and also to get more people, adults, involved. And I was basically told at three of the four councils, and they said, "No, we don't think it's a good idea." So, I think it's a bit of a stalemate right now, and we do need some new ideas. And I'm hoping that, if I'm elected, I can provide that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, we'll move on to the next topic. The subject of regionalism. It's a perennial debate in Northeast Ohio, and now, we see, you know, the city of East Cleveland actually pursuing a merger with, with the city of Cleveland. Where do you stand on the topic of regionalism? Would you consider merging with another city? We'll start with Mark.
I believe that we do regionalization right now within the village of Brooklyn Heights. When there's an emergency, there's mutual aid capabilities with Caga Heights, with Valley View, Seven Hills, Parma, Independence. I mean, the communities all seem to work together when there's an emergency, and I don't feel any reason we should stop that. We should only increase that capability. I believe in regionalization, also with the three communities that go to the school at Caga Heights. There's Valley View, Caga Heights, and Brooklyn Heights. I think we should all work together, possibly for like a recreation center or something big for the children to go to and have a local place where the three communities can all work together. I don't think there's a need for Brooklyn Heights to have one thing, Valley View, and Caga Heights to have their own. You know, we all share the same school district. We can all share some other facilities, and I think everyone in the three villages would benefit from that greatly.
Narlan?
I totally agree with that. As far as regionalism is concerned, I think our village is doing really well on its own. That's not to say that, well, there's a current debate right now in Newburgh Heights, where the mayor would like to see them annexed as far as their children in the Cleveland School District to come over and to go to Caihaka Heights. And that will affect Brooklyn Heights, and, you know, regionalism is, would be a part of that. And right now, I think Caihaka Heights, I'm sorry, that Brooklyn Heights, as far as the children are concerned, and Valley View and Caihaka Heights, we have about 900 students in our school district right now. Everything is doing fine. Although, I know Mayor Elkins from Newburgh Heights wants to have some of his children come over, and he's recognized that there are some kids that, you know, are very intelligent that are coming over. Not to say that some of the kids that are coming are, they're coming from Cleveland schools. Well, we've got some intelligent kids coming from Cleveland as well. But I would like to see what the school board has to say in terms of the finances and what will be brought in from Newburgh Heights to help the school district as well. They say that they're going to bring about $1 million a year, but I'd like to hear more information and get some more statistics on that before I could really judge.
Thank you. Tom?
As far as the actual merger, I don't anticipate that that would ever happen because of the fact that it, because of personalities involved, and as far as one council, one mayor, one fire department, I would never want to take a step back from where we are from our safety services or our administration from, we have a three-minute response time, which Caga County has an average of eight minutes. Cleveland has an average of 10 minutes. But we do things a lot in regionalization in ways that we have our dispatch, that's from many different communities. We buy salt through a consortium, so that we get a discount through. And there's, there was a new program out where we can put a lot of our equipment on that people can borrow. So, if everybody's got one of those leaf sucker things, but everybody's going to use it at the same time, on the same, but it shouldn't, everybody shouldn't have the same major equipment. We can share that. We have a, our fire department has an all-terrain vehicle, a gator, that's used in the park, and other communities have access to it, so that they need to use it for emergency rescue.
How many, may I ask, I'm sorry to interrupt the flow, but how many cities and municipalities are part of that consortium that shares those sorts of resources?
Well, as far as the dispatch, it is Caga Heights, Valley View, Brooklyn Heights, and I believe Walton Hills is involved in that, too. Newburgh has looked, and Independence have looked to join that, too. We have a Chamber of Commerce, which, the Caga Valley Chamber of Commerce that I'm on the board of, representing Brooklyn Heights, that goes over all those communities, too, from a business standpoint. But as far as the consortium, we go through Brexville. I think there's 10 different communities that we buy salt through, and we were actually able to lock into a very low price. Salt gets very expensive, and you try and budget, you know, for it, and you don't know how much you're going to need, because you never know. But if you have to buy more, it's nice that we have a price that's locked in, instead of buying it on individual. If we had to buy it just for Brooklyn Heights, we'd be paying a lot more per pound.
Thank you. Jennifer?
I don't feel that we actually need to have any regionalism. I think that the backup that we have from our surrounding communities, as we have for them, it works just fine. As Tom was speaking of the salt issue, as it's been in the past winters, as you've seen on the news, where they run low on salt. And there's communities that have no access to any, and you're halfway or three-quarters of the way through the, through the winter. With the consortium, that guarantees us, you know, a delivery as well. Our service director does a phenomenal job of keeping on top of that, and our service department does a fantastic job of keeping our streets clean. You know where the borders of Brooklyn Heights are compared to where other communities, because our streets are clean. But recently, in the last month and a half or so, we had our largest commercial building go up in flames. And that was a prime example of our top-notch services that we offer, but more importantly, the backup that we have in the surrounding communities, having, I think there were seven departments there to assist.
At least, I think there were more than that.
And they did a phenomenal job.
I think I read 10, actually, were there.
It was, it was a phenomenal job. And if you could see what, you know, is left of that building, it's amazing that, you know, nobody got hurt, and our men did such a gigantic job of getting that put out, you know, wonderful job of getting that put out in the time period that they did.
And so, as a follow-up to that, and whomever wishes to answer may, but does, so that doesn't, you suggest that a regional fire department might be, might better serve the area, rather than relying on those mutual aid agreements? Or was, as you said, Jennifer, that that is exactly proof that mutual aid is working? What are your feelings on that?
We catch a huge break financially in Brooklyn Heights, where our fire departments are all part-time employees. They're all, we hire people that are trained somewhere else. A lot of them work in other communities full-time and pick up a 12-hour shift with us. But we have three on at all times. And we used to have two on, and then, if something came up, because you need three in order for the fire truck to run. And if something happens on 480, the fire truck has to run. So, then, they page out, and eight guys show up. Well, about six years ago, we approved to go to three around the clock. And we have maybe 29 firemen, but they're all picking up different shifts. One of the benefits is that we don't pay benefits. And we, so our budget for our fire department is about a half a million dollars, where it should be about a million dollars. So, we're picking up, so if we go to merge, other communities aren't going to have that benefit that we take advantage of, and the same response time that we have.
Anyone else care to follow up on that? Does that, however, suggest that, that you're relying very heavily on your mutual aid partners?
No. Our departments do a phenomenal job on their own, but it's nice to know that that backup is there.
I think within a lot of the communities, if a fire is so severe that they have to call in, other, there are surrounding communities that will go in to assist. We've been very lucky in Brooklyn Heights. But as far as the firemen are concerned, we've got 30 part-time firemen, and they do a wonderful job. I can attest to that, because next door to me, the house burned almost completely, I would say, almost to the ground, and the police were, the firemen and the police were there within three minutes, and they were working and did a fantastic job. So, it might sound, I don't want to say snobbish, but our community is really a good community, and the mayor has done an excellent job to make sure that everything is working the way it should. And I think we're doing very good as an independent village, as far as that's concerned.
Mark, did you want to?
No, I just agree with them. I think the- I think the regionalization may not be great, but the way we mutual aid is, is excellent because, you know, if our fire department comes and looks for a piece of equipment, and it's very expensive, but it's necessary, you know, I look at, what if it was my family in that wreck? I would want every piece of equipment available to save the people in that accident. If it's a neighbor, if it is my family, or if it's just a resident I've never met before. Safety is a number-one priority. And with the mutual aid, we may not have the equipment necessary, but maybe Caga Heights does, maybe Valley View does, and when we call them in, they can help us out on that, and vice versa. If none of those communities have it, and we have the money to look for it, and our fire chief is looking ahead and, and wants to purchase that item that none of our surrounding communities have, I say we go for it and get that and protect everyone. And I'm really in favor of the mutual aid.
Our, our fire chief has been very aggressive in getting grants, so a lot of, through the University Hospital and through a lot of the things, so a lot of the things we get are because of the grants that we're able to provide it at no cost to the village.
As a matter of fact, we just get one of those gurneys that is, so the firemen can protect their backs. It's a high-tech mechanical, it almost lifts by itself, and when they put it in the truck, it's almost automatic.
We're the first one in the country to have it.
Right.
Actually, in Brooklyn Heights, Ohio.
Oh, my goodness.
Prime example of how our fire chief does a great job.
Okay. Moving on to another subject, the state has obviously cut local government funds in half in recent years, and municipalities have struggled to survive those cuts. How has your city coped? What other, what ideas do you have to, to continue to recover from those sorts of deep cuts? Narlin, if you'd like to begin.
Well, I know a few years ago, you know, we went through a crisis, and we were, we had to come up with some budget cuts that were necessary in order to keep our budget itself balanced. And the council did a very good job with that. I see going forward that if those who are elected to council can work together and honestly see that there are places that we could do some budget cuts, then it would be necessary to do it, and, and we would have to do it. I have to say that the villagers are pretty content with everything that we have right now, and it's nothing that we have that's, that's extravagant. And as Tom said, you know, we get a lot of the, the grant money from that. So I don't really see where we would have a big problem if we got to the point where even more money would be taken away from us. Council seemed like they have hung together and have been able to create areas where, if cuts needed to be, that they would, that they would do that. I would just like to be a part of it so that I would be able to see exactly where all of the money is, is going, so that I would be able to let the constituents know, who can't make the council meetings and such, exactly where all the money is going, and if cuts need to be made, I, I think they'd be willing to do that.
Tom.
About five years ago, one of the state cuts they did was inheritance tax. And there's some communities like Gates Mills and Bratton that got hit huge from that. That was a big part of their funding. That's never been a big part from Brooklyn Heights. Every once in a while, we get a check for $20,000, comes from, from, we don't know where it came from, and it was inheritance tax. So we don't get a lot from our, our court. You know, we don't rely, that's about $100,000 a year from our traffic court. And we, we're not dependent on that, we don't go out and write a lot of tickets just in order to fund the village. So overall, like I said, the, the, the village is in, is in good financial shape, but we're not where we were, and we're not, not where we need to be going forward because of the trend of it. So I, I mean, there, there's other ways that we need to look to make sure that we're bringing the funds in with the economic development.
Any thoughts on that you'd like to share? Strategies for it?
Well, yes, as I mentioned, it, it's just working, first of all, with the business owners and, and getting the referrals. I also want, four years ago, I wanted to implement a, a program where we meet with, with every business owner and set up a Brooklyn Heights Business Owner Association so that on a quarterly basis, a newsletter goes out to every business owner in Brooklyn Heights, and it keeps them posted of what's going on legislatively, construction-wise, what's going on from a grant standpoint, but also to spotlight their village to the other businesses in the area. Because if we help them make money, and it, and it costs everybody nothing, and we do it through a constant contact, through a newsletter that goes out, but we have to meet with every one of them first in order, because I'm nobody, and I get 50 emails a day that I don't open. So if they don't know what is, or what is coming from, they're not going to open up an email that's coming to them. So we need to explain it to them and the benefit of that, and that it's all about the relationships with the business owners and ask for their help in bringing in new business.
Thank you. Jennifer.
As for the state funding and the possibility of losing additional funding, I, I think that our village now, though operating very well, I think we've kind of entered a, a new time period. I've been going to the council meeting since 1997, before I got married. I was going to the meetings regularly before I even ran for council, and then obviously being on for several years. There was a time where the word comfortable's been used up here. Our comfortable was, we had a whole lot of special services. You know, we had 50-plus children, teenagers, that, you know, that worked for our park system in the summer. It was a great part-time job for them, but it cost the village a lot of money. So during those cuts that, that Tom and I were part of in 2010, there was a lot of things that our residents and our employees were just used to having that they don't have anymore. Some things have been brought back because we wanted to make sure that those programs came back, that we felt were important for the senior citizens, for the kids. The kids, the parents were paying a small stipend for the kids to be playing in the sports program, and then that was reversed once we got to a point where we felt a little better about our financial stability. But I feel we're at a point now of, we have a want list and a need list, and if we don't need it, I don't think it should be approved, because there's a chance we could lose more funding down the road.
Okay. Mark.
Everybody made very good points, and I just want to add a couple of things to that. The reason that I want to be on council is because I want the council to be accountable, I want it to be more efficient, and I want it to be financially responsible. With the money that we have in the village, and never being on council before, I, I would like to see the, the council and the village run more like people run their households. There's, like Jennifer just said, there's needs. You have bills to pay, you have things that you need done and you need fixed right now. And you can, you can say, I agree, I pass that, and let's pay that out. But there's also desires and things that we don't need, and they're coming across council, and everybody's saying, pass, 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 and, and I don't agree with that. If we see something that we want in the future, and we start planning and budgeting for it in a year or two, we can afford it, and it makes sense, absolutely. But we just don't need to pass this because somebody's in front of us asking us for money. We don't need to, to hand it out. And to reuse Jennifer's words, there's needs and there's desires. And we need to take care of our needs and, and budget for our desires.
If I could follow up to that before opening again to, to you to follow. Given the wants versus needs, a couple of you talked about recs, rec programs and, and other, some might argue that those are, are wants. Would you defend that, those as needs? What, where would you, whoever would like to answer?
Honestly, it, it depends who you ask. We have not nearly as many, unfortunately, seniors that, as we've had in the past. We had a very high senior rate within our community in the past. But they have wonderful services. But the people with younger children look and say, well, there's a lot of money being spent on our seniors, why not us?
Sure.
It just depends on who you ask. I think we offer great programs. Is there room for growth? There's always room for growth. There's things that have come, and there's things that have gone in the 17, 18 years that I've been involved within the community. We just, this year, had our first summer without our village home days in 50-plus years. We only had one year that we skipped, and it was only because of a paperwork snafu with the state. So, you know, when you have an event that's 50-plus years old, and all of a sudden it's not there anymore, it's a big change for, you know, a community. I grew up knowing what it was, I continued it for my son to be able to reap the, you know, benefits of that program, and now we don't have that. So it just depends on who you ask, and, and everybody's importance is different.
I asked the, the village council, this was about, maybe a year ago now, to take some of the money that's being funded for the recreation director to share that and also hire myself as to be part of the recreation department, where it would cost the village not a penny more, but just, I believe it was $12,500, to set aside some money for me to do the soccer program for the full year, including camps and clinics, and the other recreation, the recreation director, who's Jennifer's husband, to still have his money. I feel it would have put two people in the rec department, it would have helped the program for the children immensely, but yet four of the five didn't want to do it. And my question was, and still is, why wouldn't you want more people working who are qualified in the recreation department for our children if in fact it's not going to cost the village another penny? So these are a few things like that that I think need to be pursued and opened up.
It's difficult choices because you can't run it like a business, because it is a community. So there's parts within the, the community that are not financially sound. I mean, it doesn't, the community services and the athletic departments are not going to bring the money in that, that goes out, but it is a community. And you have to take care of the residents because you, you, you have to keep them here. And we have, like Mark mentioned before, you have to give activities for the young families that are looking to, to grow within it. So I, I think it isn't a need to have the, the sports programs and to have the community services. There's other areas, but, but the cure-all is, is more revenue. If we have more revenue, then we, that, everything's fine. My wife and I built a house there in 96, we moved in there, and at that time, we used to get the annual report that came out, and the village made a million dollars a year in profit in the late 90s.
Wow.
And so now, last year, we had a $370,000 deficit. So if we fill the buildings, that's the cure, and we can provide all the services that we need.
Okay.
I don't know if I'm allowed to speak right or not.
Of course, sure.
But at one time, I also understand that we had of, over a $3 million, talking to some of the constituents, $3 million in, in the black.
We actually had 12 million.
12 million.
Yeah.
Well, that's all, that's great. I, I'd like to be able to, you know, being, being the new guy, to be able to see, you know, where, where did that money go, even though it's water under the bridge, so to speak. I'd like to know, you know, how that money was spent, could it have been spent better so that I can learn some lessons so that going forward, I would be able to make some fiscal, responsible decisions? And being the new, being a new person, you know, I'm ready and willing to dig into that to, to see what I can do to work for the people.
One of the things is that, I mean, the village bought a, a 17-acre property on the north of Shaft that it owns, that's another area that we can develop. It was valued at $2 million, this was about 12 years ago. They bought it for a million dollars. I don't know if it's valued at a million dollars now, but it doesn't show up in the books in, in our general fund as an asset, but it is an asset of the village. So that's, there's some dollars there. So yes, there's some concerns, but we still, overall, are in good shape. We just need to, we need to have a plan, we need, we can't be complacent, and we need to go forward and plan so we aggressively plan the next five years out.
Tom, you, you had said that, you know, with more revenue, everything is fine, and, but we also talked about the challenge of not having an economic development director who's sort of driving the, the vision for, for the village. Is there, do you fear that while you are on council, that, that the, the village might face the difficult decision of, of potentially raising taxes to sort of bridge that? We'll begin with Tom again.
You're always faced with, and you, being on council, you have to explore every, every avenue, every option to see which is best. I think that's a last resort to raising taxes. There are some people on council that would like to do that. I, I think that there's other areas that you can focus on first. My goal is, is actually to do all the duties of the economic development from the council seat. I've sold the businesses my whole career. I started out in sales when I was 17 years old at Diamond's Men's Store, selling suits at, at Parma Town Mall.
Is that why your suit is so?
This is, I bought this one when I was 17. But it was the, and, and I sold pension plans, and for six years, I sold copiers, and I worked with business owners and, and learned more about selling in the six years I sold copiers than any training I had at Merrill Lynch or anywhere else. But in order to work with the, the businesses in the area, so that I wanted to do that so that we, so that we continue to grow, and it doesn't cost the village any money. I would have loved to have been taken over that position, the economic development director. They just decided not to fill it. There was somebody there, and they decided to leave it empty.
Jennifer, on the topic of the potential of raising taxes.
It's been discussed. It's been discussed more recently than I would like to admit. I, I feel it's a last resort. We have residents that are still feeling the impact of our taxes going up because of a passing school levy. I, for one, have, you know, more than one property. We own a rental property and a greenhouse business within the village as well. I would prefer to not have my taxes go up. And more importantly, it, it's, we're at a point now where we're not only trying to attract in businesses, but we do have many open, available residents within the community. Then unfortunately, these are homes that, most of them are senior citizens who have either passed on or have now been relocated somewhere else, and their homes need quite a bit of updating, so it's going to cost quite a bit to come into those homes and put into those homes to make them, you know, livable for a family to come in and enjoy our village and enjoy our school district. So I'd like to be able to still offer those low taxes to our residents as it is. So it, it's, it's more at the forefront of everybody's mind, unfortunately, but I think it'll be a last resort still for our village to pull the trigger on that one.
Mark.
Yeah, I kind of agree with them more that, that will be absolutely the last resort. However, if you look at our strong services, like everybody's talked about with our police and our fire and our, and our service department, as long as we continue to keep those as, as outstanding as they are and improve them, and economically, as things change around us, things are always going to be, forever change, we need to keep up with our pace, we need to continue to improve. And, and our residents, as long as they see us making an effort, if we do ever, God forbid, have to fall back and ask to raise taxes, they will understand that they are getting the best possible services necessary, or that we can provide to them. We're not slacking off, we're not falling behind, we're not oozing track of what's important with all of our residents and looking out for one another and their safety.
Thank you. Narlin.
I don't think we should raise taxes. Of course, it is a last resort, but I don't think that would be necessary in the, the next several years, I'm going to say possibly the next four years. I think what we need to do is become a little bit more fiscally responsible and see where, if we come to the point where we need to cut back on things, to do the right thing and make cuts where they are necessary and be willing to go into staffing that we have and see what jobs are really necessary that are, to help the community and not to necessarily, in some cases, possibly have a position just because someone is able to give you a, a position. I think they should be, everybody should be upfront and honest as far as what you have and what you absolutely need to spend. I know that back whenever, when we were talking about the park and how we used to have kids in there and they would get summer jobs, one of the reasons, because I've been, even though I lived in old Brooklyn and worked in Brooklyn Heights, I saw that a lot of the kids that worked in the park, they didn't work during the day. And it took an awful long time for those kids to be, decide to let go from the job. And unfortunately, some of those kids that were, were working there were people who had political jobs in the community. So I just want to make sure everything is being run the way it's supposed to be run, but nothing hidden.
We have one of the lowest tech, we have the lowest tax rate in the county and one of the lowest in the states, and that's a great incentive when we're trying to talk to business owners, when we're talking to them. The other factor is that 71% of the property taxes go to the schools. So out of our $5 million budget, it's really only about $300,000 comes from the property tax. So if we wanted to increase property tax, even if we doubled it, it's not going to make a significant difference as if we, you know, we, we don't want to hurt our chances of working with businesses and, and increase the taxes. And at the same time, tax our citizens are strapped to begin with, too.
If I could just say.
Sure.
If we were to really get to work on the economic development part of it all, and I do know that, you know, the gentleman that we had, you know, they decided not to reappoint him to, again, for, you know, whatever reason, I don't know, but if we had someone in there that really took the bull by the horn... But if we had someone in there that really took the bull by the horns and tried to advertise our community for what it is and what it has, I, if I was a betting man, I would really believe that we have enough resources to bring in the income that we really need to make it even a more viable community and even possibly lower the taxes a bit. There's a lot of land out there, and there's a lot of people, I do believe, if they know, to come into our community, because it is, it's really a great place to live, but they have to know that.
We need to brand ourselves as to who we are. We used to be the greenhouse capital of the world. There's more areas under glass than in anywhere else in the country.
Is that right?
And, but it's no longer. There's three.
I meant.
There's three. There's Jen, there's the Boyers, and there's Rosby. But they, we need to brand as to who we are as a community, so that when we are talking, because for years, we were the best-kept secret, and that was fine, because we liked being the best-kept secret. Nobody knows where Brooklyn Heights is. It's five stoplights, it's 1.8 square miles, it's Mayberry. People see the sign when they go by 480, and they say, "Oh, you're over by American Greetings." No, that's Brooklyn. "Oh, over by the zoo." No, that's Old Brooklyn. But in Brooklyn Heights, it was great when it was a best-kept secret. Well, now, we don't, we can't afford it to be a secret. We want people to know about it, so that we can advertise, so people know as to who we are, as a great place to work and a great place to live. And we just need to brand as to who we are going forward.
Now, Tom, I think you're making a pitch to have that garden down in Tuxedo, for the senior citizens.
Actually, Marcus.
His idea, I second the idea, and I think that you just supported it.
Well, I think it is, well, if we don't use, we can use the tennis courts, it's already fenced in.
Yeah.
Just dig it out.
Like Tom said, we used to be the greenhouse capital of the world. There's plenty of space that's good ground for growing in a community garden.
All right.
And it'd be a way to kind of replace what we lost in home days and bring people together again, and bring that sense of community and family back to the village, which is what we're truly lacking.
We recently had a meeting, and it was discussing about the community garden. And there is a church that's just outside of Brooklyn Heights that operates one. In the middle of it, everybody is, goes to the food bank, their food bank, and so that they offer to the people that come. And everybody who has one, instead of paying for the space, they give 20% of their vegetables to this food bank. We have a food bank in our community services, and we have a great community, but there's a lot of people that need help. And we had, what's it called? It's called, was the room called, you know, where people go to get the supplies?
In the community services department?
Right. Yeah, well, no, no, it's called something.
The pantry, food pantry.
Food pantry. We have a food pantry that people can come, and if they need. And it would be great if we offered a community garden to have part of that go to the vegetables to that, too. So, we started discussions of that. Less foot is cheering up.
All right. Well, I guess we're now at the portion, we'll have about 10 minutes for the candidates to ask each other questions. I don't know if anyone is prepared for that, but that could be fun, a fun exercise. Anyone would like to pose a question to their fellow candidates?
I don't really have a question.
No?
Mr. Chad, I just have one question for you, sir.
Yes, sir.
You said something about, Mark says the recreation program is, I forgot exactly what you said, turnished or stale. Can you just expand on that? Because I don't, I believe that we're going in the right direction. We do need improvement, but I don't want to negate or degrade our programs.
Yeah.
I just want to make it clear that I don't believe it's stale. Everything's good for, needs room for improvement, but, you know, I just want to make that clear that I don't believe it's stale.
Right. I do believe it is stale, and the reason I do believe that it is stale is because right now, we are relying on Valley View, basically. If we want football for our children in the village, Valley View takes care of that. Volleyball, if I'm not wrong, Valley View takes care of that. Basketball, the rec director at Valley View takes care of that. We currently, in Brooklyn Heights, we do the softball, T-ball, and I think adult baseball, and baseball for the kids. And we also do soccer, where that is coordinated by our recreation director and is carried out. I believe that it is stale, because there are a lot of opportunities to better the program, yet it has not been bettered. And I'm just wondering why the people, not the people, but a few of the people that are on council do not think it would be a good idea when you have four people, when you have two people that can be in the rec department instead of one person in the rec department? That, to me, is not growth. And I'm not saying just anyone going into the rec department, but a department of one person who basically puts in the breeze, applications for baseball and for soccer, and then, you know, fulfills it. I've even had someone come to me and say, "My kid was one day late. Why can't they sign up? I was out of town with my mother, who was sick. We missed the deadline." I think it is stale, and I think there's a lot of things that we could do to make it better. Camps, clinics, we don't have that. I had a councilman ask me, "Does that mean, Narlen, if we have you come in as the soccer person, that we should have someone come in for baseball? We should have someone come in for football? We should have someone do basketball?" And I said, "Yeah, I think that's a great idea. The more people that we have interested in the program, that's only going to make things better for our kids." So, I do think it's kind of stale.
Yeah, can I, like I said, my children are seven and five. I coach all their sports, because unfortunately, right now, we're at a time where, you know, you sign your children up, and there's a box there. "Would you like to coach? Would you like to assistant coach?" Or, "I'm sorry, I don't have time." A lot of times, the problem we're faced with, we don't have enough volunteers to coach. So, I'll get a phone call from our rec director and said, "You know, Mark, would you like to coach again? Because if not, we're going to send our kids somewhere else, because we don't have any volunteers." Now, I always say yes, but that's not necessarily the truth, because when you go to the first practice or not, parents are always willing to help. They just may not want to be the head coach. And I understand what you're saying with clinics and things of soccer, but I've also understand, being as a coach many years, we used to be teams of Brooklyn Heights, Valley View, Cogga Heights, then we've expanded to Walton Hills, now we have Fairview Park, we have Independence, we have Parma, Parma Heights. So, I do believe that we are expanding, and maybe not at the speed that you would like to see, but I do see that there is growth, and I want to continue to be part of that.
Yeah, and I don't think it's, I'm talking about, you know, speed. I'm talking about the quality of our program. That's what I'm, that's what I'm referring to. And I could give you some specific examples, but maybe later on, we can do that.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Project Hope was what I was trying to think of. That's what our food pantry is, and I was about four minutes late, but that's what our food pantry is called. Project Hope. About six years ago, when we were doing the budget cuts, we decided, we used to fund adult softball, and we paid for everything, and we paid for uniforms, we paid for the softballs and everybody. Whoever's the manager got it, me, a lot of times, we got a check to cover the umpire fee. And I thought it was ridiculous, and it helped to say that we shouldn't fund adult softball, even though I play with all three of my sons, who are 33, 30, and 27, and Mark and-
41.
Well, and there's three laskies and four layups on that team, but I mean, but we funded ourselves.
We are the Brooklyn Heights team.
Yeah, and it's, but we work on it together, but those are some of the things. I think there's always room for improvement, and the kids are a priority. I think that everybody is open to suggestions that we can do on it, but that was, it was Project Hope.
Project Hope. Jennifer, did you, you looked like you wanted to jump in on that question.
Well, I just, I would like to address, Narlen, obviously with my husband being the rec director, you know, I have another side of this. First off, the council wasn't against bringing you in to be part of the program. The issue was, is that you wanted to come in at half of my husband's pay and do soccer. Well, if he's making 12 and you were asking for six, that's half.
No, we were asking, we were asking two to four. That's what we were asking.
Okay. Well, they wanted to bring you in as a contract to run clinic programs with the children, and you did not want to do that. That's what they were offering and looking to bring you in at, and that's not what you were offering. I would also like to meet the resident that didn't get to sign up after being one day late, because that's never happened in the 17 years that my husband's been the rec director.
I would like to, I would like to get those people to call you.
I would like to know who they are, because that's why there's a stockpile of uniforms in my basement for those people who, you know, sign up late.
And that's another thing, right.
So, but, you know, the program itself, it has kind of morphed a little bit through the years. Yes, it is basically baseball, softball, T-ball. The basketball, the football have been added since he became the rec director, because Valley View, yes, has a rec center. I'm not sure where we're supposed to be running basketball. We don't have basketball courts.
Well, you certainly could hire people within the village that would be willing to do practices with the Brooklyn Heights children, have their own teams, and use the Valley View facility. I think it's a question of getting volunteers and being, having the personality to try to get people involved, instead of being, as Mark disagrees, stale.
Right.
I absolutely understand that, because I coached basketball also, and being a resident of Brooklyn Heights, we try to get one hour, one day a week in a Valley View, and they will not allow it, Mr. Chad. They just will not, because we are outsiders. And I was able to work with Todd Bonville in the village of Brooklyn, in Valley View, and we were able to get one hour, one day a week. And he says, "Mark, I don't know how you did it, but you are the first person that's been able to do this, and God bless you." And we enjoyed it, and, but it is very difficult to get hours in a gym, because we'd always use Cogga Heights, but they have girls, they have boys, they have intermurals. Their gyms are always crowded and always busy, and it's very difficult to get gym time.
Right. And I want you to know that there's a community right next door to Brooklyn Heights, Seven Hills, and I have, for the last three years, gone to Seven Hills, and I have held clinics, all clinics, for on Monday night and on Wednesday night for one hour, and they have been gracious to let me do that. And I've been able to get the gym time. I think it's a question of being able to have the personality to go out there and be willing to put yourself on the line, to ask the questions, to try to get people to give you what you need, as well as include their children. Now, we're talking about, that's the recreation department, but that's economic development as well. The way you get things done is to go out and you try to recruit people, like we're talking about businesses. Let's recruit some of these departments, whether it also be an Independence. We've got kids that are coming from Brooklyn Heights to go all the way out to the sportsplex in North Olmsted to do soccer. I've coached soccer in college. I've coached 15 years at the high school level. I've done the administrative part of it. I know that it could be better, and that's the only reason. And I'm not trying to put anybody out there, but I know that I can make a good contribution.
Moving on, does anyone care to, anyone want to pose another question to the panel before we conclude?
I don't have any other questions.
No.
Thank you. Thanks again for joining us, and please check back to cleveland.com to read stories about